Evidently Larry and Dean are not here. So we will enact Tom and Dale as voting members. Until or unless one of those shows up, then I'm not sure what happens. Did we ever define that?
We shoot them.
They're speculators.
All right, first thing on the agenda tonight. I didn't get my tablet up here.
Go to the floor.
To the floor.
Privilege to the floor. Do we have anybody here that is ready to go on privilege of the floor CJ?
Nope, no privilege of the floor.
Let me see if I can figure out a way to get back onto Zoom now. There. Now I gotta go back to the
Agenda.
All right, no privilege of the floor. So do we want to do the presentation for Village Solars before we do our two discussion items, or are they planning on being here late?
Sure, the applicants are in the waiting room if you'd like to admit them.
Shall we get that out of the way and then they don't have to sit and listen to us rant and rave about scenic byways and such?
I agree.
Let's see if they'd like to join us and we can figure out what they want to do with these paths and.
It was a nice illustration.
Good evening, Mr. Fabroni.
Hello, everyone.
Greetings.
So what changes are we making now?
Well, we were, as we went along, you know, with the various approvals you made. Yes, I'll take the blame. We didn't, I didn't pay much attention to the pathways that were covered over by the new site plan. So in essence, in order to provide the recreational trail, we need to make some changes and add some link, small links to make it continuous for point five five miles instead of point five mile, so actually increase it. We also want to add 12 exercise stations along that new pathway. And some of the other reason was, Joe, you may remember when we got the TCAT to move the bus stops into the project. The rationale for the walkways along Warren Road became a lot less obvious. So those would be eliminated, but others would be added and the bottom line is we would add point oh five miles to the overall route. It would all be pay either paved or concrete. The original approval, it was a combination of paved and stone trails. A lot of what we've seen over seven years is that people walk a lot. They power walk, they walk, they walk their dog. This would be suitable for all of those. The people who really want to run track and that sort of thing, we noticed them doing it on the wide shoulders and then crossing over Warren Road into the the Cartamon subdivision area to do their, you know, more long distance running type things. So that's the short story. And whether we have to do that through a PDA change or just a waiver, I guess, comes down to how major a change you all view this. Again, there's about seven buildings that are on top of where some of the original recreation trail was to go. So that, that's the problem in and of itself. If you have enclosures, some of the things I submitted, the one map that shows all the trails with sort of a blue superimpose on some of the existing pathways and sidewalks is what that point five five continuous circuit would be. At that point, I'm happy to answer any questions or talk some more depending on what you'd like.
That would be noted as the amenities loop?
Yes. amended recreation exercise trail. The original amenity trails and community trail, a community trail is the eight foot wide paved walk east to west. That's in place, has been there from phase two. The amenity trails are nearly all complete except for the bridge and one of the pathways north of the North Road, which is currently under construction. But all the amenity trails originally approved would be stay the same as well. And we've added certain park features in all those areas, picnic tables. We, you may remember the basketball court, we built a much better one than you had asked for. And then people wanted a dog park. So there's a dog park kind of off to the east of the village. So what you're looking at.
Larry, how did the bus stop work out? Did it, that work out well?
Yeah, very well. I mean, they're safer for sure. I mean, people were forced to wait on the shoulder of the road at the intersection of Woodland and Trip Hammer and just crossing over to that location was precarious. If, if you're familiar with the speed of the traffic there.
So there is a lot of use with the, with the buses?
There's much more use. I mean, the thing that kind of turned the table a little bit was one of the people in the TCAT office lived there. Suddenly they saw the wisdom of a little divergence through the project.
Starving isn't half so bad if it isn't you, right?
And Joe pushed it a little bit, so it helped.
Good, good. CJ, can we bring up the map?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, hold on just a moment and then Larry perhaps can kind of mark it up or annotate it on the fly if you'd like.
This was the original approval. So you see the green loop. If you, if we look at the latest site plan you approved can't work because there are all different buildings north of the Village Circle North Road. For one, and once we got, came to the conclusion, we need to knock down the old 50 year old energy inefficient buildings and put up new ones to make it more consistent with the new buildings. Those two small buildings you see, one at Village, on the Village, that's no longer Village Circle, by the way, that's named Village Place. That was renamed the interior road and then the one by Warner Road, right where the half mile exercise recreation loop. That small building now are the larger new buildings and so there's patios in the back of those buildings and the, some of the paths would either go through those buildings or within a couple of feet of the backyard patios. But now they've been replaced with a five foot concrete sidewalk in front of each of those buildings. Which is more insufficient and with the volume of traffic. Would work, like I say, for power walking, dog walking. All sorts of energetic walking as opposed to running.
And Larry, will you be clearing those in the winter time?
All the time, yes.
All the time?
Yes.
Okay.
And they'll all be paved, like I said, either paved or concrete.
Good, good.
So this is the, this, this was the old one. What's the new map look like?
The new one CJ is that one I was talking about that shows the, the blue overlay on a revised plan.
Okay, so I got a couple of the maps you sent me and I did forward those to planning board, but I'm not sure that they represent.
I, I checked it this afternoon.
Hold on. This is what I have for the proposed alternative.
That's it. Now, if you scroll up, you see how it's the, the, just scroll up a little farther. Well, you kind of lose it, but anything overlaid in blue is around the whole circumference there is the revised path. So that, that now you can see it all. And the Village Circle North and the Village, Village Circle South is south of that, but it would be continuous. There are links that we show on another drawing of what we would have to add and complete. We, we are proposing this is all complete by the completion of the next, the buildings that are about to be constructed at two and 22 Village Circle, which are the last two buildings in this Village Circle, Village Solar project phase here. The community building is open, has been open since the beginning of the month. And 117 is currently almost completed construction, which is the building on the northeast corner of the North Village Circle Road and Warner Road. So what you see overlaid in blue is the continuous point five five path. Existing paths, anything brown, some of which is under that and existing or the blue already. And then the paths for the future are how would we connect beyond the project if in fact the town's hopes of having some path beyond this project to the north? You see a green connection in the northwest corner. Right now we're look, it, it sort of appears in the southwest of the, of what you're looking at, but that's the northwest corner of the project. It can extend out very simple, yes. And then on the other end, down on the other end, it could connect out. And you know, I show connections to the the intersection of Village Circle North and Warner Road. If for some reason something happens across the way, but to date, there's nothing beyond the project. You know, nothing's happened with the extension of anything into the light industrial park to the east or either at the south end of the Cartamon project or the, what the very north edge of what the, the two crazy woman own on the corner of Warner Road and Hill Crest. So nothing can go anywhere right now, so.
CJ, I, I don't think you have a control on this Larry, but CJ, could you walk us around? I'm, sometimes I can't quite see the blue overlay on the under trail on the other trails. Can you kind of walk us around what would be the, what Larry's talking about?
Uh, let's see, I could try. Can you all see this little pointer here?
Yeah, that's the, that's the blue overlay, yes.
So I believe this is I like this, it feels a bit like modern art to me, but in any event, I, I believe.
That's exactly what I'm talking about though, what you just.
Okay. So this is kind of the analogous to this, but it has a little more appears to have a bit more variation. Is that what you're trying to say here? Showing this?
It's a little longer. It's just, just a bit longer. But it's meant to serve the same purpose. Understanding that people aren't going to be running on this path. But they could quite easily do what I call power walking. And whatever, whatever has to be added, which is shown on a different map with the additions that would have to sort of connect up with existing walkways. They would all be finished by the end of 2020. When, when these next two buildings are finished in 2022. So you, next, next, next June, July, next June, July is when that is.
Larry, did I read someplace you're going to have mile markers and path markers to make sure that people know they're on the path and they can walk it or?
Yes.
I assume there'll be like tenths of a mile mark, markers or?
Well, I, I mean, yes, in, in a sense of, I was looking for this discussion to, you know, zero in on what people thought was a reasonable you know, interval.
Do you have any representation of how these trails fit with the, what's been built? And so we can see how close they are to like patios or front doors or back doors.
Yeah, none of them are back doors or patios. But there is another map CJ that maybe the, the black map that shows the existing approved site plan and, and it sort of brings the infrastructure that's there up to date. Would give her a little better framework or where the buildings are.
Okay, and which, what was that one called?
It's, it's black and white and it's, it's, it says, I think it has infrastructure in the title at the end of it. The exist updated for infrastructure or?
Maybe this one?
Well, this'll, this'll show what she's asking. All the, all the blue, you know, so you see one 19, one 13, 40, for instance. There's, there's a continuous walkway in front of them. That would be part of that recreation trail. Then we show like a coming down the center road, a blue connection that has to be added to connect to another, scroll down a little bit, if you would, to another five foot walk that's in front of 102. Then that crosses over to scroll down a little more to a five foot path that runs along the front of 24. None of it runs back where these patios are, like I'm saying, you know, some of the original paths were within a couple of feet of those patios. So, so it continues down to the, this community trail. That's an eight foot paved trail east west jogs over to another existing trail that would be paved now, right now that that path east of 18 is a stone path till it gets to where the blue, where the blue starts. So then, then this path would run along the front of 18, 12 and six to the new, new path that will be in front of two and connect back up to where the, where the, right now the rental offices or was in 1067. It'll connect then to a path in front of 1067 that exists and now scroll back up if you would. It would come by that, that area west of the community building is all paved and then comes up past the front of 116 and across to a path that would have to be added along, not right along Warner Road, but interior or I felt it would be safer to where I started describing this. So nothing is in the rear or anything or up in people's faces as far as what's their private space.
When you mentioned everything and mile markers, do people want that? That sounds like a nuisance if you're running along with a clearing snow and pushing it back.
Well, it would be off of that norm, but you know, people who are trying to exercise and see how, you know, some people can only walk two tenths of a mile and they, they, they kind of want some idea of it. I mean, a lot of people have Apple watches and stuff now to do that, but not everybody.
I'm good with what they're happy with.
I know from walking down myself on Cast Park, it's helpful at least every quarter, quarter mile or so to to have some mile marker. So a tenth of a mile doesn't seem like too much for this shorter circuit.
That would seem to me to be good for people who are walking. They could start at a spot end up at a spot and see how far they've been because you can't drive it very easily. So to find out how long it is.
And they start to build up an exercise program. I mean, speaking as an older gen, you know, the
Where, where are the exercise stations going to be?
Well, they're going to be, so they're not in the people's high population space. But I haven't located every one of them yet. But there's 12 of them. And so the idea is to equally space them as much as we can. There may be a few more down on the south end where there's sort of more open space as you go along. See south of 20 of what we call 24, where you see GH on the building. There's more space right in there. So I may have two or three stations right in that area. So, and then as we come up on the other side, have, have a couple more. So I, you know, where half of them are down on the one end and, and space out the other half along the route. Where there's open areas that aren't like where people are coming out of their apartment.
Similar to what they have at Cast, Cast Park?
Yes, yes. That's kind of where the germ of the idea came. That's been there. I'll tell you, I think since 1989, so it's lasted a pretty good life.
Parking lots and things like that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
A number of the paths go across parking lots. I mean, are you walking through the parking lots or it appears like you are in some cases.
There are some, for instance, where we're looking right now. You would cross the community trail where that 45 sits. All that 45 represents on this map was the number of parking spaces there, but so there's a, there's a short section where you cross that, the parking lot at that point. Now, if you scroll to the north, yeah, not back up a little bit CJ, a little bit more right there. Well, you have to cross from the community building to in front of where 116 is by crossing that internal driveway. And then you have to cross Village Circle North, but you don't really have to cross parking lots. Other than over here by 102, you cross the, the driveway again, but you're not going through parking lots.
Larry, will you be painting crosswalks on the road or will the town be doing that?
If you request we do it, I think that's probably the most pragmatic not to add another duty for the town.
I mean, I think it's, it'd be a good idea on that Village Circle North, put a painted crosswalk on those, no?
I, I definitely agree and probably some signing along the road as well.
Yeah, potential safety issues.
Yeah, that's the main road crossing are those two road crossings at the North Road. It never crosses any other road other than this internal driveway. Now that's just north of the community building. The community building is 1073 on this drawing. And north of 1073 and 26 are building E.
So the trail cannot go closer to Village Place on the other side of 102?
No, what, what's not fully shown is that, that's a, that there are tall evergreen
Yeah.
trees there. And that's kind of what I was saying, if you can't, if you came in the open area, you would be right up to those patios in the, in the back of the 102.
How about closer to, on the other side of the trees? Between the trees and Village Place?
Well, you're in the ditch or you know, there, there's always the wide shoulders. Now these built, these roads all have extra wide shoulders. So that's about the only place you could go with them though, because those evergreens, if you were to drive up there, you'd see they spread out to where the, the ditch starts. And, and then you have the shoulder on the other side of it. So same thing farther to the south. There's like a double row of the evergreens, but makes for a nice privacy for the buildings from the road, but it doesn't leave any space between the parking lot and the ditch of the road.
I, I walked over there and it seemed, and I, I know what you're saying about the ditch and everything, but it, it just seemed that a preferred route would be almost on the road as opposed.
Well, we could, we could run it, you know, I could talk the cricket about covering the ditch over in that area. So we got even a wider shoulder off the road. Because just using the shoulder of the road doesn't seem too practical. You know, but assured of covering that ditch over, I don't know how we get a flat area east of those evergreen trees.
Yeah, the evergreens can't be trimmed, the lower branches. I mean, the lower branches could be trimmed and the trail.
A little bit, but they're, you know, they're, they've been there 50 years. So you know, they're, they're substantial.
Yeah, I think you'd want to, I think you'd want to keep the trail away from the highway if you could.
I agree, I agree. Yeah, I walked over there the other day and I think you sacrificed that perimeter trail, which in the initial plan looked very nice. People could walk around the whole place. Now you're walking along the edge of a parking lot by people's front doors. So you've lost something, even though you've got probably a little bit more length.
Yes, I agree.
It just doesn't feel like a trail anymore. It just doesn't feel like a trail anymore. It feels like a way to walk through a development. Doesn't seem to be much unique about it.
Well, people walk, uh like I said, walk their dogs, they walk babies, they they walk quite a bit. And then now, if you look at the original trail, like you're saying, you're right up to the ro- road. And I mean, the one thing I've. Learned in seven years from working up there now and then and ever is that's a dangerous road for people to be near.
Larry, you talking about Warren Road then?
Yes.
At least Warren Road has nice shoulders on it as opposed to Asbury Road that doesn't.
Yeah.
Asbury Road, I walked on the other yesterday or the day before and their shoulders aren't even a foot wide from the white line.
Water doesn't even have them.
Right. So.
On our road.
I mean, I know it's none of my business, but.
Yeah. On our side, they rebuilt it, but they put in this concrete gutter. And they're going, uh I didn't have a speed meter out there, but I know they're going fifty five or sixty mile an hour. Through this particular area. So I appreciate what you're saying, uh but again, you know, these are five foot wide walks. Compared to what we originally said, yes, you are walking through the project some. But not entirely, uh and. The, you know, the pedestrian count is. It's not zero, but it's pretty close to zero uh in terms of interference. What you would be doing on this path.
I I think you could take more advantage of uh the amenities trails around the um ponds in there. That's a really nice walk in there.
Yeah, just a casual walk for sure, I mean, and uh. That's kind of the pa- the paradise we've created with those ponds and those paths is. Like a park, a park within the project. Uh Rocco could speak to a little bit, but him and his father always talk about the parks, you know, even on the south end. That treeed area between the parking lot and the road. They call the South Park and then the the center portion is. The Center Park and then the North Park. And the people, the people have really responded to that, as you say, and. Then they added the colored fountains, which is a nice feature in the more. When the much that the weather allows that, I mean, the the fountains are not running in the wintertime.
And you know, Larry, I think I'll just uh interject real quick to say that the ponds, the exercise trail, these sorts of things. I think that's really the basis of what we're trying to do with this trail redesign is attempt to center them around the ponds, around the exercise trail. And create something that can be accessed, you know, certainly from the outside if uh we have exterior trails to connect into it. But which, you know, will really function, you know, best as an interior perimeter trail. Which will, you know, go around the perimeter of our project, but will do so in a way which best showcases. The three ponds that we have, which the stormwater, you know, we really took advantage of that and took an opportunity to create a manmade wetland, which. You know, has become a real feature, whereas a lot of people's stormwater controls are uh, you know, a little bit more unsightly. So I think that really that's a big part of the basis of what we're trying to do here is showcase those ponds. Showcase the interior amenities, the interior landscaping, et cetera, and to kind of use the trails to do that.
I I I'm looking at this and I'm seeing the center amenities trail doesn't look like it's fully connecting to things, especially on the north. Um and it feels like what was a perimeter trail that walked through lawn and possibly trees and stuff. Turns into a walk uh between cars and front doors to a large degree. It's it's, you know, instead of building a trail around the project, you're connecting all the sidewalks to the buildings inside and saying there, that's a perimeter trail. And it seems, it doesn't seem like it has the same feel as the originally conceived perimeter trail.
Everybody views it different, Joe. I, you know, the amenity trail is exactly what was first proposed, number one. The area north of Village Circle North is still under construction and. Will be it will complete what was proposed originally. The the East West Community Trail is exactly as proposed. This this perimeter trail, uh you know, if if I was to put it where it was shown east, west on the north end, it would be right through three buildings. Right now, so that's in a way, I'm pleading with you to consider an alternative that still works. And.
Would it be possible to put a perimeter trail to the north of those buildings that are now under?
Well, they would be right up, they would be right up in the, you know, there are stormwater ponds right behind those buildings. And there's very little area between the stormwater ponds and the backyard patios there. You know, in the in the future, we have in mind, but we're not even. Starting that conversation where that whole eight acres to the north would be more of a recreation area. But we would be talking to you about expanding the density within the PDA and adding those eight acres. Pretty much just for stormwater and recreation, but uh. Right now, there's not room to answer your question between the buildings and the property line.
Okay.
How did these buildings get built right where the trail was supposed to be?
Well, I I started out this whole conversation by saying, I think it was an oversight on all of us, because we were focused on. Changing, knocking down these old decrepit buildings and building new modern ones and. I'll take the blame for presenting that uh two thousand seventeen plan to you. That didn't account for the relocation that we're talking about now. But right as we speak. This path cannot be built where it was shown. Uh if we go back to that original drawing. It's it's through the three buildings. And it's not like, you know, these. Where were you utilizing the sidewalks? This is what I was talking about, north of one nineteen and one thirteen. You see where the stormwater facilities are. And so there's no room. Between those backyard patios and the stormwater facilities unless you want to be right at somebody's doorstep. All these paths we built in front of the buildings are five feet wide, they're not three feet wide, they're not. Three and a half, four feet wide sidewalks, they're five feet wide. So they're not inconsequential. And the one thing I would say, people have ready access to it. Now, what we're proposing on adding to kind of pick up on what Mrs. Trumble was. Adding about like a west of one seventeen, that additional link from the road up to. The walkway in front of one nineteen. Is. Away from, it's away from uh. You know, it's more in keeping what what some of the original path of Warren Road was gonna be, but it's not right on. Warren, you know, it's not right on the property line.
Where's the bus stop uh in that picture?
Good one.
We can go back to that picture CJ. The bus stop is uh, you can see it. You can see the bus shelter shown. On the south side of the road. There's a little rectangle shown, that's that's the bus stop on the south side of the road. The bus stop on the north is just exactly on the north side of the road from there.
Is that Village Circle North? Is that the road you?
Village Circle North, uh if you kind of see where uh that. Dark double pipe is shown across the road. If you look to the east of that, south of the road, you'll see a little rectangle. That's the, that's the bus shelter on the south side of the road and. It's paved right up to the bus shelter, so that somebody who's in a wheelchair or. Or disabled to a certain extent can come in on a level. And then on the north side, to answer Joe's question, is where the other bus stop is, just exactly on the north side in that location.
I I'm okay saying that the new proposed uh route is acceptable with the understanding that. Should you develop the lands to the north, that you emphasize a perimeter trail or more trails than maybe that would be typical? Is that something you would agree to?
Rocco? Yes, yeah, I think that we'd definitely be able to agree to that, you know, in principle, we'd obviously have to. Look at the specifics of, you know, what the town wanted at the time.
Right, right, but there there would be an understanding that it would be a perimeter trail on those eight acres to the north. And maybe even more trails than what would be typical that we would we would ask for to make up for. Losing the perimeter trail or the the outside trail on this development.
Yeah, and you know. That is, that hits more on on what Joe was looking for too, I think. I I don't think, you know, in retrospect, we would have made the project better, Joe, if we put a trail through those evergreens I was talking about before. So uh again, take some of the blame for being too. A casual about where those, some of those trails were shown in the first place. It's not not the ones we're dealing with here, but you'll see up by one oh two. There was a couple of pretty trails shown that in the end should not have been. So we're cleaning that up too.
CJ, is it something we could put in writing that the the developer has agreed to emphasize um. A perimeter trail and and more trails should the eight acres be um developed or proposed? CJ?
Yeah, I was just uh thinking about the extensive offsite improvements, I mean. Not really, I mean, that project is not up for review right now, so. Um I I hear where you're coming from, um I think it's certainly we can, something we can put in our institutional memory.
Yeah, I just don't want to lose that. I don't want to lose that concept if the rest of the board members were okay with that idea.
And you know, Al, it really would.
Unrealistic to end up with a uh path in a housing development that ends up on a lot of sidewalks. I think most developments or apartment complexes, the paths would end up on the sidewalks. Because otherwise, you're right in everybody's backyard, because the backyards face the perimeters. And just the nature of the animal is to have fused up where it's got to be used up.
Right, but if as as they get into developing this in the future, that that concept of a, you know, a perimeter trail. Keeping that in mind, as a as a plan, their development might be helpful, that that's all.
Especially if that new land ends up becoming available to them, having it mostly for. Exercise area or dog park or whatever they want to do with it is.
Right.
Be in addition to what they've got now, so it's gonna be, regardless of what they do there, it's gonna end up being much better.
It does sound like we're looking at greater density in the balance of the property when that happens.
Well, we would be adding that, I mean, again, this is premature to discuss at this point, but we'd be adding that. Eight acres to the overall area with with. Only the added units being within the area where there's waters, sewer and roads already. That would then become principally eight acres of stormwater control and recreation. So uh. It's a little glimpse into the future, I would tell you, uh but that's eight acres is more suitable for. What I just described.
Is that wet, Larry? Is any of that land wet?
Somewhat, somewhat, yes, uh not entirely, but uh. You know, when a when the woods grows up for fifty years and it's dead flat, it's there's some areas that are wet in there.
Larry, could I ask a quick question? Uh can you tell me, uh are the uh proposed paths uh as per the drawing here? Are they marked in any way that the planning board members could go and visit to get a sense of um. Uh the totality of the changes? I was thinking even just some spray paints to kind of just so people could follow the loop, uh maybe they could go check it out themselves.
Except there are there are portions of it that will be constructed CJ that aren't there currently that would complete the loop. Uh you know, as far as just putting up some temporary markers so people would know what portions were intended. To be a part of it, that wouldn't be a problem at all. And then I could even put, I could even put markers where the additions are intended, but. For instance, uh on on the east end of the north, east, west leg, there's no connection right now. From that uh, from that uh. Walkway down to the north end of one oh two. So it would have to be marked out for you uh in the short term. That's what would be built in the next year uh to complete the loop. But the portions that are already there would be the simplest to mark and and I I would even. I I I think it's a good idea, I could basically put, doesn't take much to put wooden stakes along where. We would propose to add.
Actually CJ.
Paint on the grass with arrows might not be bad, might be easier and easier to find.
Actually, I've I've walked through there looking like a tourist in a European city with my little map. And it's not too hard to follow where it would be or where it is, um you can get a pretty good sense of it. As long as you don't mind looking like an idiot holding the map every quick right to figure out where you are.
I'm looking, I'm looking at Google map earth and I'm wondering why the trail couldn't go closer to Village Circle South and loop back around. To kind of bring it away from at least those apartments and try to, you know, in the places where there is room. Give it uh some space away from the apartments and and make it a more, you know, walk through the lawn as opposed to walk along the apartments.
Well, that could be done there, uh it's not got the constraints that we were talking about on the north, east, west leg. And it would. You know, we show it, we show a connection to the the bus uh shelter, but it. It could serve to access the bus shelter from all directions. But it would be, I would suppose it would be up in the tree area, not uh again, not along the shoulder.
Yeah. I'm just looking for something that more, you know, I I would like to tweak this as we could to bring it closer to the original. I I understand not wanting to cut down a grove of trees and, you know, not want to run it through people's backyards. But if there are ways that we could tweak this to bring it more towards what the original concept was. And and that's that's a place where I just look at Google Maps for five minutes, it could go along there. I think it's shown pretty much doing that here.
Yeah, through that watered area wouldn't be a problem uh.
Yeah, I agree, Joe, because there's some really stunning stunningly lovely features about this development. And to do everything we can to incorporate trails close to what the original plan was, it could serve as a um. As an exemplar of what can be done in a dense densely populated area that still. Is is attractive and has some kind of rural aspects to it.
All right, any more questions for these fellows? CJ, what's our action item here? Are we making a recommendation to the? Town board?
Oh, let me take a look here and see what's on the agenda here. Um well, you know, this was one thing I wasn't entirely sure of because um Larry and correspondence did mention. Um looking for uh rather than a waiver to actually amend the planned development area. Uh so the zoning, the underlying zoning itself, uh which I can send you all just quickly to. Um so perhaps they want to expand on that, I mean. I would somewhat see this as a modification of the site plan uh of the approved site plan, depending on what the planning board's. Uh recommendation was, so I can kind of s- send you both directions depending on what the applicant is looking for. If they want to rewrite parts of the zoning, certainly they're more than welcome to, but.
No, I as I started out saying, if it's how the planning board. Views to change, uh I was under the understanding that a waiver would be a minor change. Uh the the need to go back through the whole process to amend the PDA would be a major change and so. That basically falls to your interpretation of ma- minor and major uh. Cause it's been explained to me both ways, uh some people view it. Minor, some people view it major, uh whatever it takes, uh we're willing to. Proceed through.
But you're going to create a new map to show that it's going further to the south.
Show what Joe is asking to give you a better idea where these twelve. Exercise stations will be to give you some uh idea where we would put the mile markers. Uh.
And it would be nice if it overlaid the roads, sidewalks, parking lots and buildings and tree. But didn't have a lot of extra stuff in there that had to do with drainage and water lines.
Okay.
Non-just features.
But that's all possible and uh main thing I was trying to do here was to show you what was going to be eliminated. And what was going to be added uh so uh. The absence of the buildings.
I I would think that Al's uh however you want to wordsmith it towards the future. And I don't know how legal feels, but a waiver uh to me feels good. But that doesn't mean the rest of the board feels that way.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I think it could be done with a waiver rather than redoing the PDA.
If we could do a waiver with um explicit uh requirements stipulated, yeah.
We would need the map to reference it in order for those requirements um accessible to everybody's brain.
Yeah, I've asked for a map, uh that was more relevant to the the map um. Uh that we showed kind of in the first example that had some of the imagery over it and then where the trails would be, so.
Maybe if Deb can do a tour, we can bring that.
I'll get myself.
We'll follow her as long as she's holding the map, right?
Yeah, you can do a site visit.
We'll stay thirty forty feet behind her.
As long as you're not debating the project or its merits, you are welcome to do a site visit. There's no reason. Uh to worry about quorum or anything like that. It doesn't have to be posted as a public meeting as long as you're not actually debating the business.
We wouldn't even bring it up.
She'd be wearing her mantle of dignity and everything.
Does anyone have any more questions for these guys? And maybe we'll come up with a map we can all. Look at what's going on there for the for the next time and and if we need a resolution to vote on or a um. Something that we can tell them.
It would it would just be a recommendation to the town board, presumably at um. If the planning board, of course, is satisfied with uh the applicant's submission at the. I'm presuming you guys can turn this around in the next week or so to get it on the June twenty eighth planning board agenda. Uh then the the town board could could consider it at its July twenty first meeting. Now that said, it has been referred to the Trails Committee and obviously Deb is liaison here, so. Um the Parks Recreation and Trails Committee, so um they did have some comments as well. Mostly similar to what you've said.
If there's any other feedback, uh Mrs. Trumbull, then it would be useful to have that uh. But we would deal with as many of those issues as we could.
Okay.
Um yeah, and if you would just take a look, um and Larry, I'll send this to you too, um there's in the planned development areas. Well, in the approved site plan, the planning board approved in January of twenty thirteen. Um there is some stipulations uh relative to the trails, so um if for some reason. Um you're not complying with those stipulations, just please um provide um you know, the narrative about that.
Okay.
Is that clear? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's been very useful con- conversation and I value all your input.
How are the units? Are you are you filling them up? You have much vacancy?
They uh we hit it just right. I mean, Rocco could talk more about that, but going to the smaller units. Uh just before the pandemic was like we knew what was coming. Nobody knew what was coming, but people wanted their private space, so there's been no problem uh.
Good.
Filling them up.
Good.
And we've been careful, you know, you see we it's been frustrating for you for us to do this year to year, but. Uh I guess the pandemic is some uh reason. That the people who built those three and four bedroom apartments around town are the ones that are. Are really hurting at this point, uh but I'll shut up and let Rocco, Rocco's more involved with uh. The marketing and all that.
Yeah, so I just will say real quickly that all the rentouts gone very well for this phase, uh we. Are pretty much completely rented out for the community building residential.
Wow, good.
On, we just have a few left, which that doesn't open till August first, so that's pretty normal for this point. And the balance of the project, you know, we maintain strong uh retention rates, our turnover rate has been cut in half. From where it was with our older village apartments, which really speaks to the fact that people want to live in these buildings, that they're very livable, that uh. You know, the heat pump systems work well, that our passive solar lighting works very well and uh. Yeah, the rentout has really gone well. We've been very happy with the project and, you know, we can't wait to uh, you know, finish this phase out. And then finish out the next phase and then that'll be the project and, you know, we thank the town of Lansing for all you folks have done and helping us accomplish. This has really been a once in a generation achievement as far as housing goes. There hasn't been anything substantial built in the northeast part of uh. You know, in Lansing or the northeast part of Ithaca or the northeast part of Dryden for that matter. Nothing on this scale in many, many years and it's uh it speaks to the flexibility of the boards. And it speaks to the, you know, ability of uh this market to do well, that this project went as well as it did.
Good, good.
How's the food truck working out? Has that been good or?
You know, we just had, we just had our uh first food truck experience with uh. The folks at Doug's To Go and we did a charity event and we actually didn't even know we needed to do a charity. So we didn't have any promotion for that at all, and even with that, we managed to raise about three thousand dollars in total sales. So we had a lot of people within the complex who came, we had a lot of people who came from the road and. It really showed us that this is going to be a viable thing and that was actually before we even had people moving into the buildings. So we really think that that'll go well. We're meeting with our micro market provider tomorrow. We're going to be nailing that down. We're going to be putting that in in the next couple of weeks and uh we are extremely excited for that. The community features seem to really be working out well and I think that when they are finally at full bore, once we have this all. This whole phase wrapped up, they'll be going even better.
Very good. Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Hopefully we'll have something for you at the next meeting that we can all come to an agreement on.
Thank you so much.
Thanks very much.
Absolutely.
Okay, be well.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to a discussion about the scenic byway. We are. We have the uh. Here that is showing the overlay district. And where did this come from CJ?
Uh so you're looking at a map that was prepared by, uh I can just bring it up for you. Uh county planning provided this, they have our base layers and uh they also. Um added this kind of proposed area to essentially examine the extent uh of the overlay district. Which I can bring up if you'd like to see.
Yes.
Am am I right in assuming that the width of this area has to do with some of those um? Scenic things, what you can see from where? I think Karen put that one together.
View sheds.
Thank you. We needed Larry.
That's right, and so um we also, you know, given the how. Um how more straightforward it is, shall we say, to deal with uh zoning when it's uniform in its application. I did request uh for them to apply a buffer uh that is um. Uh so if we can zoom, let's zoom in a little bit and grab the byway here, so. Uh regardless of distance to the east or to the west, excuse me, to the lake. Uh it it applies uniformly essentially over that distance and then um. Oh, yeah, and then it also uh goes twenty five hundred feet uh to the east as well. Uh just to be able to apply essentially a uniform buffer uh along the scenic byway, so. This is an idea, this is not gospel, it's just some draft map.
Seems to be taking up a huge section of the town and calling it, and so. Some decisions that might want to be made about a scenic byway suddenly are going to. Apply to a lot of sections that may not pertain. I would like to see something a little more focused so that we could decide on scenic byway um. Decisions that aren't going to be affecting huge, a huge swath of the town like that, but. I'd like to hear from the rest of the board and see what they think about it.
I concur with you and I do like, you know, changes to the underlying zoning. With the RA, I have I have no problem with a fair portion of that, but I think hand in hand. With overlay districts, as you say, one one change in wording and all of a sudden you've got, you know. New constraints and uh maybe some people love all that, uh it's not my favorite, but. I do think Larry has talked about site plan. And my opinion as expressed before, if you can't see it. I don't see why it can't happen as far as a use and proper buffering, obviously some things. Uh aren't going to fit in, but uh I think. I think we have to look at that and what's legal for us to have on site plan and reading about site plan. I do think we have every right to. Uh exercise uh within the scope of that more than we do.
Well, I I I think you need, we need to know what kind of controls are going to be applied in this district. You know, what are the extent? What what are we, what are we hoping to accomplish by creating this district? What are we going to be encouraging? What are we going to be limiting? I think we need to know. You know, before we decide on the the lines of the district or the area of the district, what do you want to accomplish within that district?
Well, that's what the lady was talking about. She wants it to be pure and pristine and. Nothing that would detract, even if there was a line of trees, she wants it pure behind the trees, the way I heard her.
Well, no, not necessarily, because there was a study done and the part of that study encouraged um. Development in the nodes like in uh South Lansing nodes, so no, she wasn't entirely, she was all for. Commercial development within the uh the uh T of the road there, um so.
Not not in the district, not in the overlay.
Oh, yeah.
What's that?
I I agree with Al on that. I thought she was encouraging the development of a number of businesses.
Yeah, in that, in the node area, in the in the corners.
Yeah, and in some of the other overlay, I mean, she'd like more wineries.
Right.
Antique stores. So how is this impacting?
Up to is that that district goes along the corridor to the north. If somebody wanted to put in a new brewery or a winery there, is that going to limit that? I mean, isn't that what we're trying to do is encourage, you know, um tourism and development? And wouldn't wouldn't those type of businesses go along with that? So what are we going to be limiting in this overlay district?
Pretty much any business that's not a tourist based business, so if somebody wants to put in a software campus. Somebody wants to put in a. Some sort of a mechanic situation, even though it might be well disguised and buffered. I didn't hear her happy about that kind of thing. She wanted a a pink purple farm stand with farmers with.
Bib over. Right, but I think she was more concerned with compatibility with the neighborhood. It was compatible and it's. Design and architecture was more important to her and to the tourism, I think, than the actual use. Of the property.
I'm happy with that, but also the noise and the crap from the tourism is something that I'm dealing with now, so. Whether you're buffered or not, you have to decide what you're going to have.
Yeah. Hey, well, can I, can I interrupt this while you bring it up? What what what's happened with Dutch, the the uh venue and and the noise and the activity, Lynn?
Well, they had the uh only had one activity that I believe had a ban. Uh people are already having a good time with fireworks, but I just think that's the neighbors over the hill. But uh now that prom was quite able to sit in the front lawn and listen to the music and.
So the you what, you could hear the music loud?
We heard the whole thing.
Was it outside? Was it an outside event or was it the music in the barn?
Price tears, I don't know. They said they were going to keep it in the barn and. the, uh, you know, it would end at 11 o'clock and the only thing that happened is it ended at 11 o'clock. But, you know, it's a little bit rural out here and people kind of don't really expect that. I mean, it's okay. Somebody might have a wedding. You're going to have a high school graduation party. That's great. But I mean, right now they're, you know, really at a, they're just, they, they're just getting the wheels on, you know? If you think you're going to have three day weekends, I can be very noisy and I'll find a way to be that way. Uh, but it's, uh, you know, it's just one of those things as you start putting wineries in, you start putting in traffic, you start putting in all the things that people on Emmons Road jumped up and down about. And their concerns is the end of the world as we know it. And I, you know, I'm all for, um, tourism, but don't think it's without impact. Sorry, I didn't mean to get on.
CJ, did you say that the, the, um, the overlay zone extends 2,500 feet from the road on the east side?
Yes, that's correct.
That's pretty wide.
A mile.
Water district, water district is what, 300 feet?
Yeah. What now? Why did we choose a half a mile there instead of, um, something that stayed closer to the byway?
We didn't. I selected this arbitrarily on your behalf. As a way to start to illustrate the geographic extent and start to maybe hone in on some of these, some of these boundaries.
Reasoning behind it?
Uh, so the first, well, the reasoning to the west is to, of course, capture all the land regardless of, yeah, to, to the lake, right? Um, and then there were, based on the view shed analysis and the scenic resources inventory provided by, uh, the conservation advisory council. There were a significant number of views that happened to be captured, uh, within that extent. So my kind of take on it, based on listening to what was discussed, um, uh, in May, was some understanding about, um, having architectural standards, uh, design review, uh, pitch roofs, um, scale and massing, uh, as well as landscaping requirements, including buffering, uh, standards on circulation access and parking, and then height dependent on slope. That's what I was hearing, um, from the planning board kind of in a nutshell. Now I guess the question could be in, in, you know, in the interim, since I've talked to you, of course, uh, there's been something of a concern about development more generally within the rural agricultural zoning district. So this seems kind of a, um, uh, a good opportunity to think about not just the rural agricultural zone, but also the Kuga Lake scenic overlay district and to see kind of where there was some overlap there. Um, and kind of have you think about how you'd want to employ this design review and, um, where you'd want it to apply to. I'm, I'm thinking and my sense from all of you is that, uh, or maybe not all of you, but some of you, that's, um, maybe it could be advantageous to start small with design review. Kind of limit it to some specific areas of the town, uh, rather than, you know, require peak drives everywhere and massing studies and specific renderings, maybe only on the Kuga Lake scenic byway, which would grab some of the RA, some of the most um, visible RA. Um, but these are just ideas. These are just kind of a, an initial start. And the town board, um, has had some recent conversation about moratorium on all commercial, commercial and business uses. I'd have to look at the specific language, but in the rural agricultural zoning district as well for fear of, well, I'll let them speak to that, but, um, you know, just for fear of, um, kind of unbridled developments, shall we say.
So are you talking about a moratorium on all of RA or the RA that's in the scenic byway?
My understanding is it would be all of the RA, all of the rural agricultural zoning.
Right. We haven't defined a scenic byway yet, so I don't think it can be in that. This is just a draft overlay district, so I don't think there's any way to, to, uh, have a moratorium just on a certain section of the IR, of the RA.
That could. Yeah. If you wanted it to follow this map, you know, could.
Well, but we'd have to decide that. We can't, without having this overlay district, we can't just say that here we're going to have, or can we say, we're not going to allow any commercial opportunities to take place in some drawing on line on a map? Is that what we're saying through the RA? And so is that creating a different zone or is that just overlaying an existing zone?
That's a good question and it could serve both purposes, right? So it could define the geographic extent of a, uh, a moratorium area. For instance, because it grabs so many different zones, right? But it also grabs all of the Kuga Lake scenic byway. Or there's basically infinite options that the planning board could recommend to the town board relative to both a moratorium as well as the overlay district. Um, these just seem to be, um, and the reason why it picked uniform numbers, um, at least for the, the, uh, area to the east of the Kuga Lake scenic byway was to be able to have that uniformity. Essentially, uh, we'd know exactly where the line is on the map. Um, to be able to say what rules would apply on, on people's properties. We could go down to, you know, very fine decimal points to be able to apply that versus the view sheds. You know, you saw they were kind of splotchy, you know, in terms of where they would apply. Um, so the overlay done this way, now it doesn't have to be that wide. I just, you know, 2,500 feet seemed to grab a lot of the view shed extent, right? It doesn't have to be that wide.
But it's that view shed that tourists are going to come looking for. I mean, I don't see us having a tourist situation where you're going to have a lot of people coming down 34 and heading up Conlon Road to try to look for views of Kuga Lake from Conlon Road or from.
Get the right route. They're going to do 34B. To go up there.
34B and that's pretty.
Right. And when you look up the hill in 34B, you gotta look over the hill in largely a good part of it. There's not a view shed to the east. Once you start looking up the hill.
There is from the road, but the view shed from up the hill is pretty expansive in some cases. If you're standing up the hill to the east of the road, there's a lot of really remarkable views up through.
Well, don't stop there. Regulate the whole RA.
Right. I mean, that's what I'm asking. Why don't you? If farmland is considered a view shed, then what is there about some of those huge expansive fields out through the R, the whole RA that's, that doesn't qualify?
There's secretly factories working out there, those fields making milk. But some of the people might want to have some other businesses out there that wouldn't spoil the view shed if there was proper site plan and buffering.
Well, couldn't the, the existence of this overlay district make more specifics for site plan review and be more detailed about what we can look at in terms of buffering and, um, architectural styles that fit in with what's around there. I, I mean, it could be a, it could be a software manufacturing area as long as it looked good.
Well, that's, I think, what Larry has tried to talk about for two and a half years. We can look at examples from other towns that seem to have a lot of say. So we seem to have this, uh, haulback and I don't know if it's guys feelings on things or yes, everything that's ever been a law has been challenged. So, you know, we can say, well, town of so and so had such a regulation and it was challenged. Well, that's life in the big city. Challenge happens, but I agree with you Deb and Larry that, uh, you know, before we start cutting our neck off and get total handouts to live, we should have businesses that are generating jobs and taxes. And I don't want it ugly. Uh, I live here.
So site plan review would take your commercial areas or commerce, but are we talking about regulating single unit residences or when you were talking about being able to fine tune right down to small areas? Are we looking at trying to tell people what color they have to have their house if they're going to be in the scenic byway?
I would hope not.
Well, on principle, no, but uh, my, some of the colors are not something I would want to look at, but on principle, no, we don't want to dictate colors, but.
We got that.
Good taste. Yeah. Good taste. It would be nice to have.
Except of course that's subjective.
Absolutely.
Taste is another man's right and taste.
Well, go through, go through the, the, uh, advanced and progressive Ithaca and look at the colors.
Oh geez.
And even, even suburban Genoa, there's pretty nice colors up there across from the pit stop. So.
Do you actually drive through Genoa Lynn?
I can go to Genoa every day. I get my coffee over there.
Ah.
Yeah, we don't, I don't go to Starbucks in Genoa, like you.
At least they have a coffee shop, right?
Yep. Gas, pizza, everything you'd ever want.
Um, CJ, how does this impact the comp plan? Or how does the comp plan impact this?
Well, that's a great question. Uh, so the comprehensive plan does call for special emphasis on Kuga Lake, uh, scenic byway for sure. Uh, and so I think what I was hearing back in May was, uh, kind of a, looking for not necessarily strong controls on use, but rather stricter design review. So, um, thinking more critically about types of construction, uh, exterior design and treatment of any proposed buildings. Um, kind of like I think what Larry was trying to go with, with the site plan, maybe a little further than that. Um, maybe not. Um, and I think the question would be, you know, articulating the rules so as to limit any kind of, you know, monotonous visual impact. Um, and then also emphasizing and requiring a some very, some minor, or well, not minor, but few, uh, architectural standards, such as I heard, um, that there was a, a definite desire for peaked roofs in this area for the scale and massing to be, um, uh, to fit in with the, the overall corridor, uh, for landscaping requirements. So my idea was kind of, uh, we could bring in Larry's site plan, uh, controls, apply design review, which was essentially, um, you know, mandate the planning board to do design review as part of the project. Um, so it's kind of a site plan enhanced, right? Um, and we could start by applying it in this particular area. Um, that's kind, it's just an idea. It's one idea and that's why I'm trying to talk it through.
But, but again, it's, it's, there's still, it's still subjective. I mean, residential versus commercial. Doug's, um, bank on the, on the corner there. I think that's a beautiful building. Somebody else may say, no, it isn't. Um, and I can find some, I can show you some residential properties that I think that are offensive. So if you're going to do site plan for commercial, I think you've got to do site plan for residential then.
Yes, that could be required.
Yeah, you can say anything. I think there might be a reaction. I mean, I think you're, you're, you're really getting down to individual homes. And I hate to say it, but we're not Pittsburgh.
Nor are we Saratoga. Which is where, when we held a meeting up there, we heard all about how they specifically delineate every single building you get to drive by in that town to make it all look cohesive. And I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's what Lansing wants to be, but. The board.
What, one other quick comment. I believe Guy said at one of our meetings that he did not recommend a moratorium. Isn't that true? Does anybody else remember that?
I remember that as well.
Guy does not recommend moratoriums in general.
Yeah.
Or he says we should do it with great care. Which is enough to scare off many people.
With specific timelines and ex- exact, uh, you know, exact verbiage and everything else.
Yeah.
I mean, and I don't see, I, I don't see the timelines being, being met.
Six months, they say. Six months for a moratorium and then you have to have the, after six months, you have to be very, very close to having something in place.
Yeah.
Right. So, I mean.
About a year.
Yeah, six months to a year is, is generally the way moratoriums go.
His recommendation is for a year if we want to proceed with this. I spoke with him about it some, about a week ago and, um, his recommendation is if they're, if the planning board and town board truly do see, uh, this type of, uh, development, meaning, uh, let's see, um, business uses and.
We don't need to do, we won't need to do site plan because we're going to do a moratorium on almost every place that anybody would want to build a business. Um, and not allow businesses to be built for a year? Is that what we're talking about here? Or am I?
I hope, I hope not. I don't.
Yeah. Are these people out of their mind? I mean.
When I went to the, um.
Jobs and pay taxes. We can't suck off Cornell totally.
When I went to the large scale, um, renewable energy meeting, they said six months for moratoriums. Maybe they were just being specific to solar development, but that's what they said. They would never go more than six months or maybe seven months, but not. But they would keep really close to the timeline of six months. And even that's its impact, you know, if, if somebody's getting, and also if it's applications and process that it doesn't apply. So if anybody's got an application into the planning board, the, the moratorium doesn't apply.
Why do we have a need for a moratorium on commercial construction at any place in this town at the moment?
Think, um, Rogue's Harbor. Think across the street at Rogue's Harbor.
Well, what's this about a, a new potential Dollar General on 34B? I think that's what's, that's what's bringing it about.
Another one?
Yes. They like to keep their businesses within a five mile radius.
Is the town board involved with this? Where's this big thing coming from? The planning board's talking about it. I don't, I don't.
It's up on.
Journal. Who's, where's it coming from?
It's by the, um, it's by, um, the.
North.
Yeah. Yes, the fire hall, right? But I also think they were, um, talking about across the street from Rogue's Harbor, what's going to be built there? Do we want a large truck stop there or not? I, I've heard that comment many times.
Have you been to the Dandy Mart out in McLean? And do you call that a truck stop?
No, but I think this one is a larger, larger scale.
Much different than the one out in McLean when you get down to it. It's got about the same number of places and I don't see trucks stopping anywhere near there when they can go up and get good access at Maravado. Coming pulling off and back onto the road down there across from. Anyway, that's not what we're talking about here.
Right, right.
We're talking about taking a huge swath of the town and putting a moratorium on business. And I don't understand where this is coming from or why.
Well, let me try to explain. Um, the, the problem we're having is that we've got a comprehensive plan and desires of our community that don't match our zoning right now. And we're seeing a lot of developments coming forward that are problematic because they don't match the zoning and the developers don't know, they aren't looking at our comprehensive plan and saying, oh, that's what they really want. And so the idea is to slow down the more problematic, the, the, the. The more problematic, the, the, the projects that we get the most pushback on. Until we have time to create the zoning to match up with what our comprehensive plan asks for and what our citizens are looking for. Um, when you put down a year.
Joe, what's the problematic developments that have occurred?
Dollar store.
Why is that a problem?
Because I, we've gotten a bunch of residents who don't like it, and I think we need.
I'll guarantee you that the dollar store. Has many, many people every day that come in and stop at the dollar store. So for every one person that doesn't wanna shop at the dollar store, or thinks it's offensive, there's probably twenty-five that use it.
You can make that argument to just take away all the zoning and say, do whatever you want. The idea of zoning.
That's a false, that false. Straw man there, we're not trying to do away with zoning, we just don't wanna restrict, restrict all commercial zoning. In almost all of the places where commercial zoning would go into town for a year. I mean, we can sort of sit back and not worry about having planning board meetings if that's where we're going.
Well, I think you spend that time not having planning boards, but instead trying to work on the zoning issue so that we get the zoning to match what our comprehensive plan and what our.
When we were doing the comprehensive plan and you were there with us, everybody said this is not zoning. The comprehensive plan is not the zoning, we're not trying to make zoning maps, we're not trying to. Prohibit or produce a certain zones. Zoning is a separate issue, this is just a plan for the way this, the town wants to go.
Right, and you then change your zoning to effectuate what you wanna do. No, the comprehensive plan is not zoning, but you use the comprehensive plan to influence your zoning update.
Right. Year, it'll take more than a year to come up with zoning laws.
Yes, for this area, no, for this area, you could work out the zoning any year.
You'd have to give it over to CJ and the new person coming in and just tell them to write it, and then we, we review it quickly. And that's the only way it's gonna get done. I've seen this town, I've seen the planning board work a long time, and I've seen the town board work a long time. It doesn't happen that quick, it's not gonna happen that quick.
I agree.
Changes, wholesale changes to almost every zone in, in the town.
No, let me, let me clarify, isn't this moratorium looking only at the um business in RA?
We haven't created the uh moratorium yet, we're still discussing it. Um there's a discussion.
In our agenda, it's just, it's only talking about uh the RA district.
I, I, from what I've been hearing, it's been talking about the overlay district and the RA district. And the town board hasn't sat down and discussed this as a group, I know CJ's talked individually with town board members. Um, and, and the question is, where do we wanna go and how do we wanna move in a way that will slow down? The projects that we get tons of pushback on because it doesn't match our comprehensive plan. And take the time, and you know, when you talk about the town not being able to uh. Work on these projects efficiently, uh time-wise, remember that was before we had a larger planning department. With people who have full-time jobs working on this stuff. And so we, we have more resources to work on this than we did back when we were doing comprehensive plan.
I just said, Joe, unless you turn it over to those two, that's not gonna happen.
Well, they're gonna work on it clearly.
There's gonna be a ton of discussion beyond that, that's gonna take longer than a year.
And the big thing is that we.
How long it took to do the comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan covered the entire town in numerous different ways, this is a much.
Right, exactly. But.
You know how many people are in the overlay district though? There's a ton, it's half the town is in the overlay district.
More than half. Right, more than half. I mean, I don't understand what the need is, it seems to be almost every. Development that we've come up with has had its detractors. Before we went to Zoom meetings, every meeting where they had any kind of commercial development on it. Ended up with a bunch of people that were against it, as well as a bunch of people that were for it. We assume those who didn't come to the meeting against it were for it.
I don't think you can make that assumption.
I was sure you were gonna.
That, that the silent majority thing i- is, is really not a reasonable argument.
You're living in a little bit of pixie dust there, I think, sorry.
And then the, I'm not sure where this, where the push is coming from for it. But I think that the overlay district is way too large. For us to be trying to treat with homogeneous laws.
Well, Larry, though, that the overlay district is just a suggestion at this point.
Right, I agree with that, so.
We don't know.
We need to better define the overlay district for the scenic byway. And we need to then decide whether we want to do anything as far as a uh. As changes to the rules and regulations for building within that district.
I'm all for changes, um I mean, I think that we do need to have more teeth on the board in order to. You know, get the projects built the way we think are appropriate. Um but I don't know if a moratorium is gonna solve that.
Yeah, I agree.
The only thing I worry about teeth on the board is that the design characteristics that we're looking at today. May be abhorrent to people fifteen years from now, or ten years from now.
Then they change them.
Oh, they don't, it takes too long.
Or they don't, it takes too long, right. I mean, we can't account for what's gonna happen in twenty-five years, or twenty years, or whatever. There's gonna be a bit different board, there's gonna be a different town board, so we have to do what ma- is the best decisions that we know right now.
Ones that we think will be, give longevity to the people who wanna build here. That when they build something, they'll be able to keep it, and fifteen years from now it'll still be legal. We wanna make, we wanna try to use. Some sense that, uh a sense that we will be um. Building for the long term, planning for the long term, and not for something that is for today only, or we're worried about this month.
We don't wanna be disposable.
That's a good way to put it.
You can't predict the future either, but I do think that uh, you know, what is it, ag industry and whatever? Uh maybe you better just change in bedroom community, and we'll do what squeaks the most uh. Feel good, you know, all the speed limits will be twenty miles an hour, all the weight limits will be uh one ton, and uh. God will live in a perfect world, but you know, a lot of things don't happen when, when you have those kinds of things, and uh. I, I just feel we have to have a, a bigger overview, I think we have to have an ability to make things. Look good and attractive, uh or at least hide behind a tree.
And make them work properly so that, so that it gets along and make the neighbors feel comfortable about. Their property values and where, what, what they're living with next door.
Also, we wanna be able to communicate with developers. Here are the criteria that we're using, so they know what is expected, sorry Al.
No, I'm sorry, but I, I think sometimes we're getting to the point where we're, we're discriminating. Against the less fortunate. Now, the dollar stores serve a purpose, not everybody has a. High-paying job at Ithaca College or Cornell University, people in the community need and use the dollar stores. If you don't wanna shop at the dollar store, then don't shop at the dollar store, order it from Amazon. But it does serve a need in the community, and to start saying, okay, we're only gonna allow a commercial business if you're a local. As opposed to a national firm, or we're gonna allow it because you grow, it's, it's natural. Grown as opposed to, you know, it, you, you gotta be careful there, you gotta be real careful there. Where you're, 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 you're acting um. I don't know what the word is. What's that?
The whim of the day, we're acting, trying to do something with the whim of the day, instead of looking at. What the, at, what's gonna happen over time.
Well, and we don't, the thing I have with um like having three-dollar generals in this vicinity is like. We wanna make sure all these businesses can survive and grow, I mean, we certainly don't. I know it's not our decision, but I mean. We also have to look at the future of Lansing, if we have a bunch of um, you know, we attend. Businesses selling the same product, they're not all ten gonna survive, and then we end up with.
General doesn't think they can make it work, they won't build them, but if they think they can make it work, they'll build them. And if they go broke, that's their problem, those buildings are easily changed into something else. I mean.
Or sitting there to rock.
Not likely.
Excuse me, Dryden.
Yeah, go to Dryden.
I recall um at some meeting, I think it was Guy, in one of those instructional things, we cannot. Control the kind of business, but we can control how the things look like, as we have done with Dollar General.
Okay, right, I.
Number two, number two.
Number two, right, not number one, number two, and God knows what we'll expect for number three.
Me Taj Mahal.
Fully sold. And by the time we get back to the perfect world where we're all walking and biking, that five-dollar, five-mile limit is gonna be kinda handy.
You're right.
Doesn't like to go more than three miles to and three miles back.
We will need Dollar Generals on every corner in that case, we won't be walking that far.
Goal was to have a corner store and a hamlet, but you talk to Jim Wilcox, you talk to uh. People that, you know, it's uh, the, the mom pop corner store is uh. There's a lot of things that have to happen, and he sells everything, knives, guns, you know, beer, a whole bit. Deli.
So getting back to the Kuga scenic byway. Are we, um, do we have any suggestions as to how we would like to suggest that this be? Uh identified or defined?
I would suggest that it lump out for Ludlowville. Uh carry some of the view sheds, not every one of them. And realized uh, you know. In a way, I guess it could change a whisker if a new brewery gets on the picture. Maybe not, but I do think it should be kinda what you see from the road, my humble opinion.
So, it's twenty-five hundred feet to the east, that sounds a bit extravagant. Seems like it could be narrower.
I would think as you're driving up the road, the, the road is gonna be what tourists are gonna be taken to. Now, are, are trying to call the scenic byway. Businesses that might build off on the side roads are going to be tourist attractions. I mean, maybe it's a definition, when I think of scenic byway, I'm thinking of driving up the road and going down through King Ferry and out through Aurora and. And Union Springs and up to Geneva. But maybe there's a better definition for scenic byways than what I got in my head. No?
I think driving up thirty-four B and looking out the window to the east while you are also paying attention to driving, or get, get a driver. And, and take a look and see what, what is encompassed in that, that view.
That I would think would be the scene, scenic. Looks that people might. Take the drive for, I'm not sure that the, the fields. The bucolic fields are anything different in Lansing than they are in any other town or across the state or the country.
Depends on what's in the fields.
Well, you know, like people get bored driving in Kansas, right, and. You know, it's more fun if there's some, some animals out in the field and, you know, that kinda thing. Not likely gonna see that, but I, I, I think that, you know, I, I think there's a limit in how crazy we can get about this. Uh and we're gonna have solid wineries and breweries, uh. I don't think, I, I, I guess that probably is what really people want, but let them go to Seneca Lake, I mean.
And hotels.
Can't have hotels because they're hard to build with peaked roofs.
Ah.
I mean.
Christ tears, that woman wanted yers, so I can, I can get yers and. Lamping tents and, by golly, I'll get me a long dress and we'll get this done right.
At any rate, we wanna continue the meeting along and. And get some, I guess we're getting some ideas to CJ as to how everybody feels.
I think the idea of the, of the scenic byway is, I mean, you could certainly have commercial development, but you don't want. Strip development that. That certainly is not something that appeals to a scenic byway.
Without a lot of reverse frontage and a hell of a lot of trees, but professional offices in a cul-de-sac. Development in a cul-de-sac.
A hotel in a cul-de-sac?
Just like Lynn said, it's how it's developed.
Yeah, I mean, infrastructure can be aesthetic, it doesn't have to be ugly.
That's right.
So I think that's, that's sort of the idea of, 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 of how to develop the scenic byway. I know, I don't think it's, it's precluding development. Um, it may be precluding certain types of development, but. Uh I think a lot of development would, would work in a scenic byway that could be aesthetically pleasing.
Tom, could you say more about what it is that you think is not appropriate?
What is not appropriate? Dollar General.
And uh by Dollar General, do you mean?
I don't, I don't know.
No, no, it's okay, uh uh I'm only just asking relative to, is it the? Uh, is it the limited amount of like penetration or articulation in the buildings, is it the color? Is it the flat roofs? Is it all the above, is it the signage or?
All of the bo- uh, all of the above plus the sheer number of, of development. Uh you know, the cumulative effect of, of lots of development, I mean, people have. Have seen strip development and it's ugly.
Tell me if there were, could any of you tell me? If there were places on the byway, so from the town line to the town line, that you'd want to see development touched down. In a limited, say, square footage amount, where would that be? Is it corner of Emmons, is it mostly in the South Lansing node? Do you see those as kind of two different nodes? Kind of, how, how do you see that?
Well, Emmons has a bar, so. I mean.
And storage sheds.
And storage sheds, so, I mean, I guess in clusters, yeah, I, I think CJ, yeah, in clusters, I mean. I mean, hopefully no one would wanna build a commercial. In the middle of a field with nobody else around, I guess, of course, it depends on what the commercial development is. Um but I personally would not wanna see solar farms.
And bus may have left the station. Doesn't have any impact, no, uh but I do believe that uh, yeah, properly developed, uh you know, where a business, professional office. Whatever, uh you may have a view of the lake, but very uh well landscaped uh and buffered. Uh would have a use, I think your ugly block building, I concur. Uh, there was always the big joke back in the past that. Was it Lake Classic said that they couldn't put golden arches in way back in the day when every McDonald's had a golden arch and. The golden arches are about a foot high on the, on the McDonald's there on the side of the wall, so I think if. If uh certain outfits wanna come in. Um and without saying any names, that they, they have to comport with a look that's. um, without saying any names, that they, they have to comport with a look that's, um, I don't know whether what's in North Lansing is a look that people want or will put up with, but a design of parking lot, uh, and landscaping that is, uh, not offensive.
Right. So CJ, I think all of us would agree that it's the, the basic block buildings, the orange, the reds, the plastic, the neon, the, the lack of, uh, uh, landscaping or limited landscaping, all of that is, is probably not, um, ideal or attractive or wanted in the community. So I think it all comes down, not all of it, but a lot of it, again, is back to that architectural detail. It's not the, not necessarily the use, but is it compatible with the community in the neighborhood? And is it safe? Is it attractive? I think that's more important than what it actually is.
Okay, and, okay, and may I ask further? Would the planning board prefer to act as the architectural review board for something like this or, and/or would you want to have, uh, say, a third-party architect, architecture firm, review submissions in those areas to suggest perhaps improvements, um, or some combination thereof?
That's a good question.
I think it'd be nice to have a third party to ask, like an architectural firm. That would give us ideas and thoughts. I think that'd be great.
And they'd also have the expertise to know what would be a reasonable thing to request.
Well, we'd have to pay an architectural firm to try to make decisions. And an architect has already generally been hired by the contractor developer. And maybe we could ask for suggestions from them. I mean, do we have to have opposing architects?
No, they pay for the third party. They just give a check to the town, just like the town engineer.
That's right, that's right.
But it also gives them, I don't think it should, well, I don't know how you can do it legally, but it would seem to me there's going to be projects that please us and then projects that not so much please us. And I guess if developers get down to the, uh, fine points, little bit like, do we need a full EIS? Even though it's not required, maybe that's where they have to pay an architect to represent us and come back to the table and say, no, I really don't think that, uh, that planning board is acting for too much. And, you know, that's, that's where I would see it happening, not, not every day.
Just be aware that we've had a lot of design and architecture firms set up the town center years ago. Things of that nature too. So, I mean, and that's all fallen by the wayside in many cases.
The woman bought the land.
So.
The architects would naturally try to outdo each other.
Right.
In a competition like that, and of course they get paid for every hour they're working, but.
Right, and have no re- I won't go into that. Anyway.
Somehow we have to have some sort of limitation on that kinda thing, or else we have to set up a, if you wanna go with trying to govern the looks of the building or the looks and feels of the town, you have to decide what you want it to look like and then have everybody comport to those kinda looks. I mean.
Does that get back to core base code?
If you want it all to look like the new bank, then we would go with a bunch of log and, and, uh, um, pulp and stuff. Or if you want it to look like a Dollar General, then you would go with a bunch of square buildings that are made out of concrete block. I mean, is brick gonna be acceptable? Do we, how far do we wanna go in saying that you have to have a mixture of brick and wood and no vinyl siding at all allowed and windows have to be a certain percentage of the outside walls so that you, you see this and roof peaks have to be no less than five twelve or what do, I mean, what do we want? How far do we wanna go on this?
And, and you make a good point, Yuri. You're right. Where do, where do you cut it off? So I, I don't know if there's a good answer there. Um, I mean, I think, I do think the community and the planning board would like to see some control over architectural detail, but not to the point where you're specifying the color of the soffit and the window trim, you know, um? So can you do it and be broad-based with it? I don't know.
I do think that we have more of a right to, to try to control some architectural detail than we do how many of any store wants to go in the town. I don't think we have any say in that at all.
Good by, uh, limiting where the buildings touch down and the size of them as well. Footprint is another good way.
Those are ways we might achieve an end to keep somebody out. Is that what you're saying?
Well, necessarily to keep something out, but more just like a more targeted approach to where you'd like, say, business and commercial enterprises to locate.
That's what we do with our zoning, isn't it?
Well.
So if we wanna change the zoning in the town, then that's what we should be setting up. Not trying to bring up moratoriums, moratorium until we change the zoning. I mean, we just went through the comprehensive plan. Are we going to go through and try to redo the zoning? And do we want to, if we do, do we wanna try to do it zone by zone instead of do the whole town all at once? Or area by area? Do we wanna break it up into overlays and scenic byway overlay and architect or agricultural overlay and a commercial overlay and industrial overlay? And do them individually, or do we wanna try to do zoning for the whole town, or do we need twenty-three different zones instead of four? I mean, I'm not sure where we wanna go. Or what we're suggesting here.
Well, just to back up a minute.
I don't think it's practical to do the entire town at once. I, I think that's just not gonna happen. I think you have to do it piece by piece somehow.
And still end up making it a cohesive zone. The thing is that for anybody to wanna build here, they have to feel like there's some longevity that, that what they're building is not only gonna fit in with the town, it's gonna work. And it's not gonna be zoned out of existence at some time in the near future because everybody changes their mind about what they think something ought to look like.
Well, they should look forward to expanding. And that's where things might get interesting. Uh, and I do think that opportunity is the key to the, you know, to success. Um, and if we're gonna say, hey, we're gonna be a bedroom community and as I say, not have jobs and not generate sales tax, uh, we have a, an interesting hill to climb.
Well, and if we wanna do that, then all used car dealers have to move to Bratton or Dryden and used car repair shops and I mean, some of the things that are unsightly, construction companies that end up parking stuff or storing stuff around that are unsightly need to move themselves out of town if that's where we're gonna, if we're gonna look to do that kinda thing.
Well, then you're gonna end the town.
The, the, the-
I agree.
The beautiful, uh, uh, view sheds. We can't have that, no. No business.
You just plant a bunch of freaking trees.
Can't see the view shed.
Well, they're just high enough, Doug.
That's the problem right now. When I was young, you'd drive down Route thirty-four towards Eska and you'd see a lot of the lake. And now you see very little of it and only in certain spots that you're gonna get in a car accident if you try to crane your neck to look at.
So we shouldn't have any, no buildings towards the lake.
You can see are the trees that have grown up over the years.
So you saw that by no buildings?
Pictures of where Deb lives. Ain't no trees.
There are only trees.
Not in nineteen sixty.
Oh, some of them are old enough.
Yeah. Yeah, there were a few, but right now we've got, um, the whole area driving down these roads for the most part. Until you get up on, uh, thirty-four B are not something that you can see the lake from in very many spots. So I'm not sure why the scenic byway. I mean, I understand the meaning of it, the reason for it. But I'm not sure that it's gonna draw, it in itself as scenery is gonna draw tourists.
Well, the nice thing about tourists is they don't put their children in your school for you to pay for.
Uh, how many breweries or wineries are we gonna fit in the town of Lansing along the scenic byway?
Don't leave out the head shops and the marijuana groups too.
We certainly don't want any more event halls.
People gotta work off all their energy.
I'm getting the feeling this discussion is not really going anyplace.
I think we go back to Larry's site plan and look at it real hard. See how-
Land needs some help.
I think so. And how far we can go. And I think look into scenic byway with areas that are scenic and areas that aren't so scenic.
I would, I would, I think we need more teeth in regarding architectural detail in what we can recommend or suggest.
Is that town-wide? Am I hearing that town-wide or am I only hearing it in the overlay?
Why not? Why, why just one area? I think it's town-wide, yes.
So.
Do you want anybody to come over here and pay taxes and employees?
I mean, I'm not saying no to things. I'm just saying it's, it's done in a way that it's complimentary to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And different neighborhoods might have different aspects that are complementary to them.
I personally like the idea of hamlets and having several dif-, or building up the little hamlets that were in the towns, although that would mean possibly convenience grocery stores in each of the hamlets, which might be too close for some people's sensibilities, but the, we have several hamlets that this, that the town of Lansing grew up around. And I think that it'd be nice to, of course, maybe it's my age, but I just think that it'd be nice to have that kind of, those little hamlets growing up where people identified as part of Ludlowville or they identified as part of North Lansing or South Lansing or Libertyville or whatever you wanna, wherever you wanna go. When I was growing up, they were almost like separate little conglomerates.
Because the bicycle only took you so far.
And so did my feet, although I could walk from the top of the hill above the school when I was like seven up to the Red and White, my parents didn't even mind. Was that Wilson? Jim Wilson owned the Red and White there before the IGA came in and put them out of business.
They went side by side, I think, when I was up here in the sixty-eight, sixty-nine. Does that sound right?
Uh, the old Red and White, he slowly reduced his stuff as the IGA when the IGA came in. But then when Tops and all those went in down the street, the IGA couldn't make it anymore either. Tops and Loblaw's.
Well, don't talk anything about all the gas stations that were in South Lansing before, so you can leave all that out.
Yep, we had a bunch of them.
Right, right next to the Road to Harbor.
And down across from Portland Point, Higgins Gas Station and the Sonoco Station, I mean, right there within a mile or so, you had three of them. Three different choices and it's about-
Portland Point, Portland Point Road had a gas station.
Higgins Gas Station.
That was Higgins there and then, then they had cabins behind. Now that's where you could have the yurts.
And lamping.
Yeah, I would consider gas station or convenience store a, um, amenity that the scenic byway would, would be desirable in the scenic byway. As a place for people to stop and get their stuff done when they're touristy.
But maybe not too many of them and only in specific places.
And maybe in specific areas, but I don't know that we have a right to count how many of them, although maybe we do if they match up to the way we think they ought to look. Then I would think that it, uh.
And if you get rid of the, the neon and the orange and the bright yellow and the lights and it's landscaped correctly and it's safe getting in and out.
Of course, I think LEDs are gonna replace neons unless, unless we wanna, um, we would have to regulate them by, by color and not by gas because the, uh, LEDs are gonna be taking that over, I think.
I think we're getting pretty far into the weeds. But I do like the idea of the hamlet development. People on bicycles may not be, uh, so keen and gone behind trees. So maybe they would like, uh, a break every five miles. I have no idea. Um, but, you know, I don't know. Would they be really interested in going down thirty-four B? Yes, some do, but my gosh, you go on a town line road, my dirt road, Lansing, you know a town line. They got people on bicycles and people come up there and walk up the damn road and you gotta be careful. Because you can be talking to yourself and somebody says hi, you know, and it's very, you know, it's just very, it, to me, it's intrusive, you know, they come walk their dog on the road and they clean up and everything, but I, I, I find it interesting. Um, that there's just, you know, nearest house is eighteen hundred feet and you gotta put up with people.
But Lynn, that-
It is New York.
Human race.
That's, that's true with the majority of the town. I think everyone here probably sees bikers and walkers and joggers up and down the road. People are at more active today than ever before and utilize the town roads, county roads, even the state roads.
I think it's great to bikers and walkers. It's them cars whizzing by that I'm not so happy with.
Especially my grandkids are out playing. They're not really looking at the scenery.
Or watch it out for my grandchildren.
Or worrying about their exhaust system.
Yep.
By the way, what, what about those, uh, those cigarette boats on Cuba Lake that we listen to at night, Joe?
Oh, geez.
Kinda way to enjoy them in a different way? I know we're not allowed to take them out, but.
Or the car wash over here in my backyard makes an awful lot of noise too.
They won't allow you to wash your mud truck up there either.
I think that we've given you some ideas, CJ.
Uh, but, okay, so the town board, I think, is looking for a recommendation about number one, uh, uh, so we're still thinking through the Cuba Lake scenic byway overlay district, but I am seeing that you, I'm hearing that you want the geographic extent going east to reflect what you can see from the roadway. Is that what I'm hearing? And that's how we should amend that map? Okay. And then is there a recommendation from the planning board about, uh, limiting or imposing development moratoria on business uses in the rural agricultural zoning district? I'm hearing from the town board that they would like to know whether the planning board, um, would like to see business uses, um, essentially suspended for a duration of anywhere between six months and a year. And if we could have just a little, little more conversation about that, it'd be much appreciated.
I would vote no.
I'd vote no.
I vote no.
I vote no.
I don't think there's a plan about
Dale?
How to deal with it.
I don't know enough about it at the moment to, um, say one way or the other. Uh, it seems like the whole RA district Putting a moratorium on the whole RA district may be a bit much.
Yeah, I think we need to know. Yeah, as a.
I vote no. So we would, I think, like to explain to the town board that from the planning board's point of view, the majority are pretty sure that they would not think that a moratorium on business in the RA districts is a reasonable step to take at this point. There may be some reasonable steps to take, but a moratorium, in my opinion, is not it.
Okay. Notice.
And, and CJ, can, can you check?
Wait, Al, Tom was talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear him.
In, in lieu of a moratorium, um, then the thing to do would be to implement zoning sooner rather than later. Because I mean, that's, I, I assume that the
I agree.
It's about getting, getting the, getting the zoning, getting, getting time to, to get the zoning right. Um, so maybe we should be, uh, more focused on getting the zoning done.
And when you say the zoning, can you be specific about? Are you talking about the site planning pieces that we were talking about more generally?
Well, Joe, Joe was talking about, you know, maybe we can't do all the town right, right away, but maybe we can do parts of the town.
So we could do like the RA's home? Is that what we're saying? Change the is that what you're suggesting? Change the regulations in just the RA zone to start with?
Yes, and, and, uh, and think more about this, uh, scenic byway thing, how we wanna deal with that. But yeah, um, maybe the RA zone is where to start.
I want to clarify that the, uh, comprehensive plan suggests splitting the RA zone. It's two different zones. One with more restrictive zoning than the other. So that's what you'd be talking about.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have an ag district?
We have eight ag districts, but their, uh, proposal, uh, came, came out of the ag committee was an ag, ag zone and a RA zone.
Okay, that's what you'd like to move on sooner rather than later is the Cuba Lake overlay as well as the RA districts, the two sub-districts.
The scenic by overlay, you mean?
Yes, correct. Uh, yes, I should just call it the overlay district. Um, as well as I'm hearing the Larry's site plan considerations, as well as any kind of low hanging fruit that's in the zone, coming out of the zoning audit as well, which of course I haven't had time to write up. But is that what I'm hearing? I will soon.
Oh, talk about it, but yeah, I think you're pretty close.
Okay, okay.
But I think that we need to have plenty of information about the ag district. Because there are rules and regs that we can't do anything about in there. Is that true, Lynn?
Yeah, uh, normal ag practices, so to speak, but I don't think, uh, supporting businesses, uh, if you will be, uh, meat processing, small time. Uh, and that kind of thing, uh, are, are included as necessary for, you know, ag use and I, I don't know how far they go into uh, ag support as in, uh, repair or, uh, sales, uh, in that department or uh, you know, protected chemicals and that kind of situation as far as like, like a Helena ag or Caravale, stuff like that. So.
When we were doing the comprehensive plan, it seems to me that the ag people were meeting at the same time. And they were bringing forth, um, suggestions that would be accepted and, and didn't, wasn't there a whole report on that that was done by that lady from Cornell?
Yep.
Or extension, extension maybe.
It's in the comprehensive plan.
That, that report was more, I believe, ag district from, from Monica, but the
Monica.
Monica. That was near state ag districts, but I do believe the ag committee had a report and John Fleming, I think, be aware of that. I think he was ahead of that at that time or maybe one of the bucks. That could be gotten out. I'm sure it's in the. It's an appendix to the, it's an appendix to the camp.
Comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
Yep. So we'd need to be aware of what's, what's included in that, some of the work that's already been done. And if we're gonna make changes that are, uh, against what's already been discussed in that, then we would need to make sure that we have the ag people and ag committee that's making sure those guys are aware of what's going on because they're a vocal block in this town.
Okay. We should be able to get going. Nice.
Nice to be able to do it this winter instead of when everybody's going to Cal to get their work done.
Yep. Yep, I agree that the wintertime would be the time to be working on this, although we could be putting together information for um, for the consideration before that. How busy are our meetings in the future? Are you seeing anything, CJ, that's got us with these, an end to these four and five hour meetings or twelve hour meetings or whatever we've been having lately?
Uh, yeah, well, we're certainly, um, hoping to, you know, move some of these projects, uh, along one way or the other. Um, I can't say, I just want to mention that, um, our new planner will be starting on June twenty-eighth. His name is John Zepco. He's coming from us, to us from the town of Ulysses via Keogah County, via Town of Malta. He has extensive experience in agriculture zoning, farm, uh, form-based code. Um, he's a erosion and sediment control certified, as well as a certified floodplain manager. He will act as the town stormwater management officer and, uh, he will be coordinating all development review for the town. So in essence, we're gonna try to, um, you know, marry and, um, you know, bring together, uh, more closely our planning um, processes with, uh, our construction. Our new code enforcement officer, Scott Russell, started last Monday and, um.
Do we want to try to, would the board like to bring him to a meeting and and have him introduce himself and get to know him a little bit because he plays a pivotal part in our decisions? I'm, he's pretty busy at the moment, though.
Yes, that makes sense.
Backing up, I wonder, and maybe I missed an email, was anything done for Lynn that already happened?
Yeah, the, the, um, uh, the clerks, uh, put together a little party and retirement, uh, lunch for him today. So I think it was just town employees for the most part, but, um, I am happy to coordinate, uh, with planning board if you'd like to do something special as well.
Well, you can at least make sure that he gets our best wishes.
Absolutely. I tried to get him to come to Zoom, but you know.
We would, we would have all enjoyed coming to the meeting, to the party probably.
Yeah, it's, um, it's, sorry about that. I, I asked the town clerks to help coordinate because I was, um, out last week.
That's right. You were gone.
Um, but in any event, um, I am happy to, um, you know, pass on anything, a card or something that you might like to do. We're happy to coordinate that, um, and I can mention that to Heather as well to reach out to you.
How much longer will Lynn be with us?
Uh, that's kind of up to Lynn. Um, I did extend an offer to him to stay on a little bit as an independent contractor, if he so wishes. Um, but, um, I'm supposed to hear from him tomorrow whether he will, uh, accept that offer or not.
Okay, okay.
So I guess we've been over both, um, agenda items as one. Are there any other questions about the moratorium or the scenic byway? Any other statements anybody'd like in the record?
I have a totally unrelated question about the, uh, training stuff for workplace violence and sexual harassment. I've never found them on the perma site. Me either.
I, I tried going and trying to do one and it didn't, I just ended up in a circle.
Yeah.
Didn't get anywhere.
There, there's, there's a tab on the site that says my trainings. If you click on that, that you can click on each individual, uh, training.
It, but it don't have any sex and violence.
I, it's in, it's in, it used to be in like a six-point type. I, I did what, I did what you said, Joe, and I didn't get anywhere. I mean, I, I started it out and, and then it just, it wouldn't let me go forward.
I couldn't even get to the site.
Did it get your certificate? That's the question.
I just did a screenshot of the certificate. I don't know how to download them.
Well, I didn't have any login.
Before we end this meeting, um, going back to this perimeter trail, it really sounds to me like they just ignored it and put buildings over it.
Well, and we didn't pay attention either to say, hey, you're putting a building over this trail.
Right, you're right.
So that's on us too.
You're right, Sandy. It is. We should have picked up on that.
You should have.
Yeah.
Except they don't give you maps that really show what's going on. The mapping that they give you is really bad. Where, you know, one map has the trail, the next map has the buildings. Um, that, that's not enough for people to really understand what they're proposing.
It's trying to promote, um, confusion.
They did a good job of that.
Good at reading prints, but those were pretty difficult to put together on a computer screen.
I, um, I walked over there and I didn't find it a very nice trail at all.
No. Well, how can it be a nice trail whether it's on the road or on, in the building? It's, it's in all, all that development. It's not gonna be a very nice trail, no matter how you do it.
Or it's a place for people to go to get exercise and it's set aside for people to exercise themselves and their dogs and their kids or whatever. The one thing it does, they don't have is bicycle trails or, or anything to do with bicycles, but I guess there's a lot of road in there you could ride if you wanted to, but you'd probably go over and down Cardamom's. None of those roads up through there have very good, um, trail for, for getting around and sharing the, the road with vehicles safely.
Not when the DOT places right up the street, get him.
You could go in and ride around their building. You'd get an acre ride, wouldn't you?
They didn't put any trails in.
No.
We asked, we asked them to and they didn't.
Uh, the county can do what the county wants, I think.
Yeah. State definitely does what it wants and doesn't do a damn thing to get things done, but other than that.
Yep. Any other comments or, or, uh, CJ, did you have anything else you wanted to bring up?
Um, I think that we were, uh, mentioning that you wanted to do the planning report at this meeting, so if there were any questions.
That would be fine.
Yeah, except for I did not provide one this month, so.
I mean, just say, um, for the record that we thank Lynn and appreciate everything he's done for.
Yeah.
It's been a pleasure working with him.
Be nice to get a card together. We could sneak to the office and sign it.
Okay, absolutely.
Pizza party for him, but maybe that's not what he wants. I probably want straight cookies, but I don't know.
He did like those cookies, Cindy.
In lieu of a planning report, can you say whether you had a good vacation or not?
Yes, it was great. Yep, very, very nice. Mostly just sun. I didn't bring my laptop.
Well deserved, CJ, well deserved.
Well, thanks. It's very good. Um, yeah, so, um, we are gonna be having some new folks here, so you know, I I feel bad. I have wanted Lynn to come to the meetings, but, um, he is somewhat allergic to Zoom, so, um, but I will, I will pass on your warm regards. I'll, um, and, and coordinate with Heather, who's, who will be listening to this, um, if you'd like to
We heard.
Write a card.
Have we heard anything about how long we'll be able to continue with Zoom meetings from the state?
Guy says they renewed the, uh, um, ruling, so we'll be able to do it for a while. I forget exactly how long he said. Um, I did ask him and he did answer and they did renew it. I'm looking, I'm looking for his email right now to see if he said how long it was renewed for. Hmm, I'm waiting for the, uh, thing to pop up.
Yeah, so I think we can.
We can continue. I just don't know how, how long it is.
Desired.
Oh, at least it'll continue until the next meeting, so we can discuss it at that point if we find out a time. Um, I think that we can, everybody can think about it and see if you want to continue at Zoom or if you want to try to get together, everybody's vaccinated or how, what we feel about it. And with that, if no one has anything else to say and doesn't interrupt me in whatever I'm saying, then this meeting is adjourned.